Ran up the steps.
I'm still trying to get them on, I'm sorry.
Oh. Okay, it is September 10th, 2020. We'll call me in order, please stand for pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. More than nothing more.
Two o'clock in the morning.
Yeah. Okay. We'll wait till she gets them up. We've disbanded the working group, so we're gonna go... We are the working group now. Quit. Oh, yeah, we can do that.
How you guys need to do it.
Yeah, let's do that, and you can... you can move on.
Is that the only thing we've got on, or do you mind if I have questions about for me?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
It's just the signing of the Zoll medical maintenance agreement for the sole source that we have ran in the paper. It looks like it's a total of $121,890.
Yeah, and you already approved this, gentlemen. Good morning. We were doing due diligence and go back, the rest of this whole stuff was all on a cooperative. It turned out this was not on a cooperative. We asked for permission to run a sole source advertisement, which you granted, and this is just coming back to you to make everything necessary and proper, so.
Good. Maybe that we approve and sign the Zoll annual maintenance agreement.
All in favor?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, David.
Okay. Sure, sure.
Is it midweek?
It starts...
Is it 10th? Is it a Monday?
Yes, it's on Monday, and then the bike test starts at 14:00 or something.
It's all right there?
Yeah. Yeah.
Place on 54.
Yeah.
Ain't much room there to have much of a... Guess it's just kind of stop in.
We got a face.
Morning.
Good morning.
Can you see everybody?
I can.
Julie, we did start with talking about the care lead group is disbanded, so you guys will go directly to the commission with all the applications, and so... And I'll let you take over from there.
All right, yeah, so we've got a really busy agenda today, so if you go too quick or anywhere along the way you want to stop us, just, you know, feel free. So I think I'm going to cover at the top, and then Bruce Seymour's going to walk through our checklist just so you can see the process that we go through as we evaluate the various requests to put forward to the commission, and then we'll spend time going through the current funding recommendations as well as the list to kind of see what's ending, whether we've not had them through. So with that, and then since everything is online, our goal is to be able to share the screen and show you the applications as we talk about them, but if for some reason you feel like that doesn't work well and you need to print them out, it's, you know, a lot of papers, so we just want to make sure if it is something that you want printed out as we go along, then we can certainly do that on board. So just wanted to touch on the fact that our application is live. We've already started to see, you know, quite a few applications coming in, so that's all good news. The subrecipient agreement that we made some changes just due to recent changes in the legislation, or not legislation, but in the guidance. I've got a couple of things that just need to update from Jill's notes, the county attorney. So we'll have that ready for you all on the meeting on Tuesday, so just kind of getting back to that practice of once an application's been accepted, and you can go ahead and sign the subrecipient agreement at that time, and then obviously if you want to hold those and not make a decision, we still will have the subrecipient agreements ready to go when we need them. We also wanted to touch on the fact that for applications that are not funded, that's going to need to be a communication that needs to come through the whole county, right, the BKD. And so we could plan to have a call with the county attorney to walk through that process and develop those letters. We haven't had, I think we had maybe two or three, but that process needs to be developed, and if there is an appeals process or anything along those lines. So one question I have to you all is if we do meet with the county attorney, would you all three like to be included in that meeting? So if so, you know, we'll make sure to make the schedules work. You know, does it need to be in a commission setting? You know, that's a question I'm going to put back to you all to ask your opinion on that.
I guess what are you going to need to meet with her in regards to?
Right, so in any time that there's a decline or, you know, denial or something that's not funded, number one, it needs to be an appeals process developed, and it also, you know, needs to be, because the decision to not fund it, or there's risk associated with that. And so that would be a decision that the commission, or, you know, the county and the commissioners would make, so those particular letters would need to come through, you know, the commission rather than BKD. And so we just want to develop what that appeals process looks like, you know, with the letter. You know, and when I say letter, it's literally, if you, just like we have a one-page statement of award, it can, you know, it can be something that, you know, just basically says, you know, this is not being awarded, but that just needs a little bit more legal review, so we want to... We were planning to have like a working session with the county attorney, and really my question is just if if it's something that, you know, you feel comfortable having her bring forward to you all or us bring forward after working with her, or if it's a discussion that you want to all have together.
So basically, it's just a letter that's gonna explain that we are... have to decline their application, and so it keeps us legal, right?
Exactly.
So I... I think, you know, you and Jill can work that up, and then we can look at it. If we have any questions, that's just me, but I...
Yeah, so you said something about an appeal process and something about risk for denying. What are some of the risks?
Well, so there's a, you know, someone could challenge that, why did you deny my application? You know, for whatever reason. I mean, it could be, I mean, the reasons could be there's not enough funding. It could be, you know, based on the needs, but it's obviously any time somebody's not getting something just inherent in that process, there's, there's risk that... So that's, you know, and this is something that we're looking at across all, all of our clients, you know, whether it's county, state, cities, you know, it protects you all as well because you do have that process, so, you know, you can certainly weigh in. It's just a matter of, you know, as these applications are starting to pick up, there's going to be more and more of those applications that will not get funded for whatever reason. And so we just want to make sure from that risk and legal perspective that that's covered for the county.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be good with you working with Jill initially, and then if there's other issues that we need to address, we can all get on board.
Yeah, we can, we can look at the draft, and if we think something needs to be added or changed or something, we can do that.
All right, well then we'll, yeah, we'll set that up, you know, over the next week and work through that with her, and then bring all of that to you all as soon as it's ready in terms of giving the feedback before we, you know, we're not going to put anything out without your approval, obviously, so. All right, also, we have some subrecipients that have been awarded that have not returned their executed agreement for whatever reason, whether it's they don't want to jeopardize any other funding they might be getting. So in that vein, as we start to think about again the volume that we're getting, we want to set a timeframe that if someone doesn't respond, obviously, we would check in with them to make sure, you know, there's nothing, there's no reason why either they didn't get the information or something. But absent that, our recommendation would be that if someone's not responded by the end of September, that those funds go back into the pool, basically to get de-occupied.
That's just for the schools?
At what now, if the schools are the only ones that were, that's been an issue that...
So be...
Just kind of thinking through the overall process.
Phase one.
That for some reason somebody just never followed up and never wanted to pursue it, then we would want to have that set in place.
So obviously, there's still applications coming in for that, so do we just give them so many days to respond?
Yeah, we could give them ten, you know, ten business days is obviously standard. You could say, you know, you have to go back by 9:30, everything goes back to the county. It's, those are probably the best two options.
Julie, would maybe putting a 30-day due date on a subrecipient agreement work? And, because it's basically, they've been approved, they've gone to them, we're just waiting for this documentation back to sun, and so could there be something in that subrecipient that they have to respond within 30 days, or otherwise the funds will be de-occupied or something?
Yeah, and we can have, it can be any number of days. That's why I was thinking, you know, the 9:30 day... I mean, obviously 10 days gives us plenty of time. I mean, that's, that gets money back into the pool pretty quickly. Having that 9:30 date gets us back to, then if we want to have a phase three with October, we know what funds we have available. We could do a 30-day window, but I'd like to get y'all's, the commission's thoughts on that.
Is that, is that subrecipient agreement, is it, does it change for each, each award, or?
It's definitely the vendor that we're giving the money to.
Right.
Their name is in there, and the dollar amount. Julie, are you doing the subrecipient based on every application or just every entity?
So there will be an agreement for application, but I will say for purpose, and that's really, again, just to make sure that, you know, nothing comes through and then somebody spends money appropriately or something, and they're like, oh, I didn't realize it. That's more, again, just out of an evidence of caution, but in terms of how the state and the federal guidance looks at it, each entity is a subrecipient.
I was just wondering if...
The reason that's important is for subrecipients that end up entities, that end up receiving more than $50,000, there's additional requirements just in terms of details on how the money was used, where it was used, when it was used, you know, just some of those details. But that's kind of the threshold that is in the federal guidance, is that $50,000 threshold.
It's kind of been...
But the subrecipient, sorry, can you...
You're fine.
The subrecipient agreement is a standard agreement. Once it goes out, exactly what Debbie said, it's just a matter of just really put the amounts in the names, and that's all.
Is it something that we could have them fill out and submit with their initial application and fill that stuff in?
Well, one of the things we didn't want to have them go through that process of filling everything out if they're not going to be funded.
Okay.
So that's why upon the award, that's typical of how you would do the grant agreements, is once, once somebody gets a statement of award, then they would sign those agreements agreeing to spend the money, or even if you're getting reimbursed, you know, to use the money in the manner in which they originally asserted it.
I had a friend in yesterday who works for DESI, and they have some care grants, too, that they're doing with schools where it's like 75%, and then the counties could come back with 25%. That's a requirement. If later after this, if some of the schools do that, can we, even though we're past phase one, would we still be able to do that? Yeah, and my understanding is some of the private schools, they've already gotten PPP loans, and they were told that taking this money could jeopardize...
Exactly.
Could jeopardize those loans, which is why, why they are not, not applying, because... So I, I don't know, I'm just... I'm learning more as we go along than I...
Yeah, yeah, the guidance, which needs to get, sometimes it gets clearer and sometimes, sometimes it's not, but, you know, I think we're all learning as we go here. So, yeah, so that's the reason why we wouldn't do necessarily a subrecipient agreement just based on the application, but actually wait. And then it's also that trigger to let us know that this person or this entity is, you know, agreeing to comply with all the requirements, so. So I guess the decision on the table is, do we want to ask for those back in 10 days, in 30 days, or by the end of September?
It's the 10th, so that's 20 days.
Right, but as new, as new applications come in, if they're doing, you know, what if they...
Less time.
Yeah, so, I mean, I like the 10 days, 10 working days, just as a point of going forward. That way, everybody kind of follows. I mean, but if that creates more problems for, for you all, then be open to some suggestion, but, I mean, as we get into, more into phase two, I mean, those are going to be, those are going to be coming in, and they are coming in, so it doesn't give you much time to get that back.
Yeah, I mean, 10 days, 10 days works fine for us if that's the consensus.
I'm fine with 10 working days.
Sounds like you have all the consensus, Julie.
Thank you all. All right, so then the next thing we wanted to touch on is just making sure, so we're starting to get a lot of applications that are, that are not for reimbursement, where people are submitting, you know, here's my request, is it going to be compliant? And if it is, then I'll just spend the money, which is, you know, we've been very clear about these are reimbursements, and I understand that in the county, internal county case, you know, those items may not have been purchased yet, and that's more of a decision for the commission to approve, and then for the internal team to go in and actually purchase those. But I did just want to kind of make sure that everybody's on the same page, so that when we do, you know, we're going to have to go back to all of these applicants. So basically, we're not going to consider them, we're not even going to really look at them until we get those receipts. So we'll ask for additional information, but again, it's not going to be, number one, it's not going to be cost-effective to have us look at those applications twice, and again, there's risk to the county to say, yeah, we think they'll comply, and then something happens when we get the receipt, and then it doesn't comply, so, you know, that's why we just have a blanket. If we don't have the receipts, you know, we're going to ask for more information, but they kind of just go back into the pool, and we won't bring those forward yet. So again, just want to get, for as a point for clarification, making sure that that's your expectation as well.
So that's on internal? Internal or external?
Julie, you're talking about internal and external applications?
Well, kind of, let's take it one at a time. So if external would be first thing on the table, that those would be expected to be reimbursements, so let's talk about that first.
If still in agreement with that, that people have to actually spend the money first, and then we'll reimburse it. Not an application that says, I'm thinking about buying this, will it qualify? It's, here's my receipt, please reimburse me.
Well, I think since the very beginning, we've been saying we will reimburse them, so I don't...
I don't know about that. Because if it's something that they could use, but they don't necessarily have the funds to buy, then they go and expend the funds and don't get reimbursed, it's going to put as much hardship on them as it would in any instance. I see where you're coming from, though, that, yeah, doing it as a reimbursement would make sense.
So even that would comply with, like, the court's request the other day? You'd have to go by it and then ask for it?
Yeah, this is just external, this would be, you know, outside, this would be not the internal to reimburse.
So some of the small businesses, the not-for-profits.
But if you're doing something to plan or prepare for the worst or whatever, you don't necessarily have to buy it, you're just going to try to set yourself up to be able to handle it if it does get worse. I don't have an example.
I don't know, I think that's kind of a catch-22, because, I mean, yes, I could use this, but I don't have it budgeted, and I don't have the money sitting there to go buy it, and so, you know, do you not, you got to make a decision at that point, is, I don't know if I might get funded or not, so you basically got to buy it on your own and think, oh, well, we may get reimbursed and we may not.
We could put reimburseables as a priority, because they've already went and bought it, which shows that they were going to need it if they weren't spending money on it.
From the beginning, it was going to be like reimbursables because of the timeframe that we have. We're not talking about a big timeframe.
Right.
And if you go approving something that you don't know if they actually did, and they were supposed to have did, and now you've approved it, and they didn't do what they were supposed to do, or you're going to deny them after their approval's been approved because they didn't... It was just going to be a reimbursable at the end.
I didn't follow you. You said they didn't pay, reimbursed, denied.
Right, they didn't do the right thing.
So we, we said we were going to give them the money. Okay, let's use laptops. We need more laptops for the health department, or we think we will, because we think it's going to get worse, okay, say it's whoever, the hospital. They don't want to go buy them now, or they do want to buy them now, because if you need them in a month, when the flu season gets here and everything gets worse, they're not going to be available.
That, that's more of a policy thing. Are they going to go ahead and buy them or not? Is that priority or not?
You're saying, no, if they's being reimbursed, they need to go buy it right now.
Well, not now, they could buy it in phase two or three, I mean, three or four if they want. If they want to wait, that's their decision.
If you wait till you need them, they're not going to be available.
I think some of the applications we've got, they've already spent the money, and they're what they're...
I'm not talking about them.
Apparently what we're seeing is that the cities and the nonprofits, the businesses, not so much with the schools is where, you know, and you'll see the list here shortly of where we're getting these applications in, and, you know, they're, they're... They don't have any documentation with them, so, you know, at that point, it's like, do we want to spend resources to go through that process and make a, you know, a determination? Not necessar, number one, it's breaking with the process that you've already published. So, you know, our recommendation is that you stay with the reimbursement requirement for the external applicants, because that's what you communicated to the community. We may need to clarify that the, you know, again, the applicant, we've said it several times, but we can say it again, the application is for reimbursement, so it would be that they do have to spend the money. They may be thinking that there's an application separate from the reimbursement. I mean, that's a point, possibly a confusion, so we can clear that up. But our recommendation would be for, at least for this phase, that we stay with the reimbursement for the external applicants. But we did want to get clarification because we're getting so many requests in without any documentation of purchase.
I'd say for now, reimbursement's fine. If there's money left over, then we can work in something else for external phase two.
Right.
Is that...
Okay. Is that still consistent?
Just, thank you, Julie.
I was thinking of the overall picture, not just the external and phase two, but for external phase two.
So do the external applicants, if they've received other PPP loans or other things, are they... Can they not get any of this? I mean, they're aware of that, or they should... I mean, it's part of the application process and part of the criteria, right? The scoring criteria?
Yes.
It's part of the scoring criteria if they have received other funding sources.
Yes, okay.
And you're saying that that could jeopardize whether their loans are forgiven or something?
That's what the private schools are saying, so, is that, that... Right now, a PPP loan, and if you use it mainly for salaries, which I think is what they used it for, that whole amount is, can be forgiven, so... But I think...
So can this money be used for salaries?
This money can be used for salaries if it is for, there's two different categories. One is public safety, public health and safety employees can be funded through the CRF funding, and then also any employees that have been substantially diverted to COVID-related activities. So for example, it could be, you know, a librarian is now working in a testing center, something like that. So those would be the two criteria for funding salaries and related taxes and benefits.
But the PPP is strictly sal- But the PPP is strictly salary, right?
No, the PPP, it started out 75% was salary, 25% could be rent. Then they changed it to, I think, 60 salary, 40.
It's specific to that, not for other things?
Yeah, it was just, it was just while you were closed down.
Good with the external.
Yeah.
Yeah, all of the PPP loans were to primarily, right, help with payroll, but there were some other categories. So, but for purposes of this topic, I mean, the reimbursements.
Julie, I think you meant to.
Clarify, but I feel like for the applicants, you know, we need to let them know that phase two is, the money has to be spent before the application can be made.
Yeah, I'm good.
Julie, you had to, or reimbursement for external?
Yeah.
Phase two?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, all three.
So then, yes, to talk about the internal department, so we've done that both ways. We've had where departments have spent the money and then asked for reimbursement. And then we've also had where, I believe, we've come before the commission. And then if the commission has approved it, then we've gone ahead and purchased that. So, again, that for internal departments is really more for the K P purposes. We just want to be sure what, what our process needs to be, so if we do receive requests, we can't make sure we're handling those appropriately.
So if you take the trackers that are more at the health department, we haven't actually expended a lot of that cost yet that we're budgeting to estimate for. So we're going to do the exact cost out of care, once we know that exact cost by the end of year. But she's wanting to know, can we go ahead and approve those? Because they're internal and, you know, we'll make sure we do what we have to do right to abide by all those regulations. So it's up to you guys, whether you want to keep approving those monthly every time we get a payroll? Or if you're good with approving that whole application and then we move forward? And bill, bill it later when we have to.
Bill it at the end?
Yes. I think we're going to try to bill it monthly or maybe even quarterly, because we have to in a way to do the reporting on all of these things to the federal government.
We've kind of allotted so much money for that, though, right?
Right, and that application's kind of, we don't have receipts to show them, just like that.
So there's still some on the court, so I, I've got some questions on it.
Okay, those are coming, yes.
Yeah, okay.
They haven't been approved yet. All right, Julie, I think there, are you guys okay with that?
Yeah.
All right, that's three, Julie.
Okay, and so, and so that's three, where it can be either reimbursement or it can be approval prior to, prior to purchase?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so then, just to touch on the fact that we're expecting reporting to the state of Missouri, probably around the 15th. If it does not, you know, there's a possibility it might be delayed, I'm not really sure at this point. But we're kind of targeting 915, 921 is the date that it's required to the federal government. So we're working, working towards that goal and we'll run away there. Then what I'd like to do is just turn it over quickly to Teresa Seymour out of our legislative office, who's got to walk through the funding checklist, just so that you all can see kind of what our process is when we go through a review of an application. And then Leanne's got to walk through.
What'd you do, Debbie?
This is what you need, Matt, here.
Getting good, or? Are you around near the courthouse? Okay, we're just having some technical difficulties, so.
Can you get Brent over there?
Yeah, maybe.
All right, I'll get him down.
Thanks, bye. You want Sam to fix it?
Yeah, we spoke to the evening rotary Monday, Tuesday night, I don't even know what day it is, for Mark's office. And he had it all set up, boy, he had a light and he had his phone.
Uh huh.
I tell you, I, I conduct a.
We came over because we want to give you a quick update.
Okay.
Do you want to do it now?
Yeah, you could do that now if you want.
Brent, Brent's coming up.
See, you know, the schools started, well, some of them started in August, some of them started this last week. And one of the issues that's came up is, you know how the federal government has designated some types of work as like critical infrastructure? So it's like hospital personnel, law enforcement, meatpacking plants, or even wastewater. You know, they, if they're identified as a contact, they can go back to work as long as they, like, follow these really strict guidelines. Wear a surgical mask, not the cloth ones, you know, and follow, you know, social distancing and regular monitoring screening. Well, just recently, the federal government designated teachers as essential critical infrastructure. But the state of Missouri has not. The state of Missouri put it back on the locals to decide whether or not they wanted to consider them local, critical infrastructure. They put it back on local health departments and the school districts. So the school districts have been talking to us about this. And I talked to some of my counterparts in the other big health departments yesterday too. And they're all, you know, everyone's kind of thinking about going ahead and saying that, yes, teachers can be classified as critical infrastructure, essential workers. That way, if the school districts want to allow them to work, if they've been identified as a contact, they can, as long as they follow those strict guidelines. So we'll probably be the first health department in the state to do that. But we are wanting to go ahead and, and kind of give our school districts that leeway, that if they feel that they want to do that, we're okay with it. We feel that the risk is very low, especially, we have a lot of contacts that never convert to positive cases. As long as they adhere to the guidelines and do the screening and, you know, watch for symptoms. They're, they're staying six feet away from the kids, they're doing all the things they need to do to really minimize the risk. So we feel like if doctors can do it and continue to see patients, then teachers should be able to too.
And then if they start having symptoms, then they're, then, yeah, then you quarantine them.
Yes. Yeah, and as long as they're staying six feet from the kids and they follow, and they might have them do another function besides teach, but they can still, or maybe they're in, in doing the virtual, you know, whatever it is, but they don't have to stay home that way.
Right.
So we just wanted to let you know that we were wanting to do that unless you had an objection.
Doesn't, doesn't that also allow them to go to the state health lab and expedite a test?
So that. We can, yeah, but we have to be the submitter, though, but yeah, we can.
And by the collector for them.
Probably the collector and the submitter, maybe we could work out a deal with somebody to be the collector and the submitter. We don't have a lot of PP, but maybe we could work out like EMS or, or Kennedy Health Center or somebody to be that, but yes, we could, we could send their tests through the state public health lab too.
Yeah, when you and I spoke about that, that made a lot of sense. I mean, I'm supportive of them being critical personnel, but I also am supportive of them being able to get a rapid test and get a result so that, that they can know if there's another issue that they need to address within the school. And so having to wait several days really is, is not acceptable.
See what we can do about that.
Yeah.
Maybe we could work it out with Dr. King, I don't know, or, we'll, we'll see what we can do.
Yeah, I think that's great, yeah, with your wife being a teacher, it's.
Well, but I mean, it's, so, you know, obviously the issue with Calgary happened last week. And so, you know, we're just waiting days to find out if it was a positive test result. And it's like, well, you know, we need to know as quickly as possible so that we can identify or to minimize who we're in contact with going forward. I mean, obviously, you'd hope that people would stay home, but.
And everyone's goal is to have a safe environment for the kids and to keep them in school. But a lot of the school districts have said, the limiting factor is not going to be sick kids, it's going to be staff. And if they're just out because they've been identified as a contact, this can get them back in the school. So Jeff, we were talking about the essential critical workers, you know, being like healthcare person, law enforcement. Well, the federal government said teachers can be, the state put it back on local health departments and school districts to decide if they want to do that in their county. And we want to do that, that way, the teachers, if they're in contact, they can go back to work as long as they follow the strict guidelines.
And the school districts can still say they're not going to.
And, yeah.
School districts can just say that we're going to allow them, let them, you know, let them make their decision that way.
I like that, I like that.
All right.
It's good, no, thank you.
Yep, yep, yep.
All right, Julie, we're back. No, that's good.
Jeff had to go to the bathroom. I don't know.
Don't say it, I'll have to.
Thank you, Julie. We do need a couple of our laptops, though, we've been talking to Rick and Brian about them. Because I can't work from home if the type of cases are working.
Then we'll reimburse you.
Okay.
I thought that's what you said.
Not internal.
Oh, so we have different rules for us, I like that.
All right, I want you guys to take back.
All right, I'm going to turn it over to Teresa.
Morning, everyone, yeah, I was just going to go over the review checklist that we have. I think you have a copy of it in front of you. Create is kind of based off of different guidance that we've received, some of the coronavirus relief guidance, and the TRF guidance as well. So if you're looking at the checklist itself, you'll see that the first tab is the CRS tab. And this is just kind of a summary tab, so this kind of summarizes all the information within the application itself. So it's got all the different categories that we've been told are worth reporting on, as you say, and then therefore the treasury. So it's got that listed up here. And then at the bottom, we have just is this application complete and is this documentation complete kind of checklist thing to go through overall, if all of those items are there. We've also got a expense detail tab in here, and this allows us to go item by item through that application. So most of the applications have multiple items within them. So we make that determination on allowable costs and whether or not we have all those invoices and proof of payment on those individual levels. Also, we have a uniform guidance tab. This is the guidance from, for the federal funds, so the uniform guidance is that single audit guidance. So this has specific coronavirus relief fund guidance, so if that was necessary for COVID. Was it the expense incurred during the period, the March through December period and things like that. And also, we have all the standards kind of uniform guidance requirements as well for allowability. And then the last tab is going to be our risk assessment tab. We've already talked a little bit about some of these, these items within here, if they received funding from other sources. Have they ever had a single audit before and things like that? And that results in a score, whether or not they're higher risk or lower risk. So that's, that's the checklist that we've been using, and we update this as guidance gets updated. And we'll continue to use this even with the online applications as well. That's all I have to leave.
Like your, like your chief sign behind you.
Nothing's really changed from when we first was there, but we did, just since we were lining out the application process, I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of what the process looked like.
Okay.
All right, so now what we're going to do is hear from Leanne and talk through some of the requests that are actually pending for your approval. As well as, just so you can see, I think one of the requests we had last week was just to kind of see the whole list of everything that's pending. We may not have reviewed it yet, but, you know, just to let you know. And then our goal is, because there is so much information here, is we'll pull these up as we need to. If there's one in particular that you want to look at, you know, we're happy to spend as much time on these as you need to. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Leanne.
All right, good morning.
Good morning.
Is there, so you're.
Can you speak up, Leanne, we can't hear you very well.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
So, okay. My microphone, is that on? So you've got the two-page list in front of you. The top of that list shows the things that have already been approved to date. The first one that we have to recommend for today is from one of our non-public schools. And that is an electrostatic sprayer with disinfectant. That is similar to what we have purchased or what we have approved for some of our other entities, where they're just spraying disinfectant. The difference between the request amount and what we're recommending is just sales tax that the county would not need to pay. And I'll just plan to move through these, unless you have questions, you can stop me at any time.
Do I have a conflict with this one, or?
Did you, I don't think so. Did you mark these as far as anybody having a conflict with those? We've really only heard in writing from one of the commissioners.
I have to write, I need to write, you want on?
I don't think it is, if you give me the number, I'll look.
CO5 over.
This one is not a conflict.
Okay, thank you.
Not a conflict. The next section, the ones that start with D E R, internal requests. The first is the hyperflexible simulator from EMS. This is the software that we had talked about a little bit last week. That works in conjunction with the, with cardiac monitors and the simulators in order to test how the patient responds, would be two different scenarios, if I'm explaining that well. We knew that that was eligible based on the different ways that COVID patients tend to respond. It's a little bit different than maybe what is usual. It's a little bit different than maybe what is usually seen in other medical instances. The next one is a plexiglass barrier for the assessor's office. Uh, the difference there again between the request and the recommended amount is simply sales tax. Most of these in this section have to do with physical barriers or office retrofits. The telework stations for court clerks and the pretrial release staff. Uh, this is 10 workstations at $1,500 of these. The, uh, HEPA filters in both the courtroom and in the basement offices. Uh, just protecting the air quality. Plexiglass barriers again, those would be, uh, separating the attorney and their client during the trial setting. The AV equipment to support civil litigation by video. This was just improving the, the microphones and the, uh, the video during the court. For civil. The off-site venues for civil jury selection. This is where they need additional space in order to make those jury selections because they can only bring in so many people at a time to accommodate the physical dispensing. The AV equipment for viewing criminal trials. This is a requirement that those criminal trials be viewable to the public. So it allows those trials to be viewed from additional rooms besides just the main courtroom. The AV equipment in the courtroom to assist the jurors. That's because the jurors are spaced out. And so it will give them additional audio and visual, uh, uh, excuse me, audio and video to be able to see what's happening. Mostly microphone from a distance if they are spread out a little bit in the courtroom. Uh, the additional cleaning staff, so there are two things there. One is for some cleaning staff on an ongoing basis. Three hundred fifty hours per month for four months. And then the other one is a monthly deep cleaning. Those are estimated at 20,000 each. And then finally, the window intercom for the public administrator. So all of those we determined to be eligible expenses under CARES Act. Moving to, um, the public health emergency. Are there questions about any of those items?
Well, the one I had questioned, uh, was the monthly deep cleaning at $5,000 each time. I, I, I know we went through that before with Judge Walker. And, you know, you, you clean them and then when you let the public, when you let anybody back in, it becomes contaminated. So I know we've got some, um, sprayers on order for our maintenance. And I didn't know if, I think basically those are going to do the same thing. So that one I still, I just, I don't know about you guys, but I did.
I have several there that I'm not sure that I'm wanting to move forward today. Not that I'm wanting to deny them, but maybe just research them a little more or ask more questions. But, you know, and, I mean, I get some of the AV equipment. I get the, uh, you know, the off-site jury trials, uh, some of that stuff. I'm, I'm not sure, you know, you know, once we start putting HEPA filters in. I know schools have looked at that and sometimes you create an environment that's maybe so clean that, you know, it's almost harmful. So, you know, your immune system has to kick in and we're limiting the number of people in there. And so we should be limiting the number of people we have in our offices as well. And then the telework stations, I think, is also just something I'm just probably not 100% clear on. I mean, I would think that we could rotate people in and out. And maybe that was, maybe I just need to talk to Judge Beadham about that one as well a little more. I'm not sure I'm fully clear on that one. I did have some questions too. Uh, I know it's not on this list, but, um, below there, there's some requests withdrawn. Could you kind of go over some of those?
Yeah, so we'll go, I'll go ahead and, um, walk down the other sections, not in as much detail.
Right.
Uh, but the next section where it says more information needed. Um, in those cases, particularly the internal requests, the ones that begin with the letter D, we just need information explaining why these expenses are necessary related to the COVID health emergency. That we did not have enough information to make a determination on those expenses.
And basically that's those 18 laptops for here that we could share with the health department and anybody else. That's the ones that Brian came up with and the hotspots that we would need if people went home. And the court security, that was the extra bailiff we had. I didn't elaborate, my fault, on the applications and why we needed those. So I need to go back and elaborate on why we needed those.
Okay.
I think the hotspots are kind of like that 10 telework stations, you know, where the court clerks work from home. So I think this, hotspots are kind of the same thing for, yeah.
So I'll let you.
So it's not to say that they would be denied. It's just to say that we did not have enough, uh, supporting documentation to make a determination, to make a clear determination. Uh, the requests withdrawn, those are all from private schools where they have asked that their request be withdrawn because of the Catholic Diocese receiving PPP loans. They were concerned that additional funding might jeopardize the purpose of their PPP loan. First one withdrawn at this time. They choose to resubmit at a later time. Those will certainly come back on the table.
Okay, so they can come back at later time. Yeah, okay.
Have they, uh, have they indicated if they're not going to apply for any funding from any of the schools in or?
They've not, other than the few that had applied, they're kind of asking us to put it on hold. There has not been a whole lot of them that has actually applied in the private sector.
But they can, but they can later.
We haven't opened until September 30th now. It's phase two for schools. So if, if you got to want to let them open in phase three still, or if you want to move on, it's up to you. But so the end of September is what it's open to. They could still come back anytime in between here and the end of September. And then we can talk about it in phase.
Yeah, I'd still like to help our schools if we can. So I, they keep coming out with different clarifications and different rules. We got those from Senator Hawley last week and it's kind of like.
And that's why we got these guys to help us make sure the certification of all the changes incorporated.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Uh, the next section consists of municipal requests. The very first one is 16,834. We've talked about that one before. We have gotten, uh, a lot of documentation for that. We're still going through it because it consists of a lot of individual purchases of a variety of items. We'll hope to put something forward to you on that the next week. All of the rest of those are things where we do not have, uh, supporting documentation, many of which are items that have not yet been purchased. Uh, so those municipal entities are, um, you know, applying, looking for something that might be approved, uh, but have not made those purchases yet.
So will, uh, will those be considered external then as well?
Those are external and right now, aside from the very first one, we have not reviewed any of those in any level of detail.
And they would, they would need to go out and purchase that and ask for reimbursement?
Right.
But based on our.
So what we'll, we'll do is we will, we'll, you know, we'll respond back to, um, all of these applicants. And then on our frequently asked questions, we're going to put out, I think, now that we've got clarification from the commission, just an additional statement about that the application, you know, has, there has to have been a purchase made before they can apply on the external purchases. So we'll clarify that in our frequently asked questions.
Yeah, I, $110,000 on delinquent sewer bills. That, I'm, uh, that, that doesn't make any sense. And then we can ask for, to reimburse for our jail costs that we haven't received. I don't know. I'm, that, that one just gets, gets me.
Many of these have obviously different levels of priority if you were to choose to fund them or not. Um, but at this point, most of them have not even been purchased. So, uh, we just did not want to spend the time without your direction to do so otherwise.
Sure. Well, architectural redesign of City Hall is.
Uh, the final section, the ones that begin with the letter E, those are requests from other organizations. So it's a mixture of nonprofits, healthcare organizations, and small businesses. And the last time, I believe when we met last week or possibly the week before, uh, the decision was made not to move forward on any of those at this time during phase one because the emphasis was on the schools and the internal needs. So at any time that we're ready to move forward on those, we could start reviewing those in more detail. Prior to this week, prior to entering phase two, those had been on hold. And similarly, these are a mixture of things where in some cases we have documentation, in some cases we don't, but we just did not act on any of these yet. At your recommendation.
So will you be coming back to us with, with your recommendation as to whether these should be approved or?
Uh, yes, now that we're in phase two, if you're ready to move forward with other organizations, which we'll be doing with the online application as well, uh, we can start reviewing these this week and expect to write some of them to you for recommendation next week. Assuming of course that we have the documentation and that the items qualify.
So those, these, these will have a score with them and, and how they're eligible, I assume?
Yes, these will have a score with them once we do the review. We have not been doing the scoring with the internal requests because the scoring mostly applies to external type of questions. And also with the schools, we didn't really put a lot of emphasis on the scoring because we were working within an allocated dollar amount per school. But for these, we will be providing you with the scores.
So at this point, I mean, would you like to go and look at this top section and determine, when I say top section, the, um, the items for your consideration, starting with the, um, non-public schools, the internal counter requests? Anything that you would, you know, kind of think of it relating, go into three different categories? Either, um, not funded, on hold, or, um, you know, go ahead and move forward to fund?
Work down the list so we can talk about each one and approve them. You guys good with that? Starting with the non-public schools up there?
Do we approve them today?
Just, just down, just down to the subtitle.
Questions on, we may be able to answer those based on the applications.
So it'd be.
So if there's anything we want to discuss, we can, um, do that today.
Just the top half of page one, basically?
Just down through Ds.
You good with that, Jeff?
Yeah, I just don't, I guess I'm confused because I thought we were going, answering questions today and then approving on Tuesdays.
Oh.
I'm fine with it. It's keeping moving.
Do it whatever way you want.
Yep. I mean, I think we can approve both days. Is that kind of how everybody sees it?
Sure.
Our, yeah, our goal was normally to approve on Tuesdays. It's just given that this is the holiday week and we had these kind of built up. You know, any of these that you would like to put forward, we can go ahead and move forward on. Uh, if you would like to have them on hold or ask questions, and then we can, uh, put them forward for your consideration if you get on Tuesday.
So non-public schools is C dash zero five zero three. You guys good on that?
Yes.
Yeah.
I move that we approve C dash zero five dash zero three.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay, hyperflexible simulator. Good with that?
Yes.
Okay. I move that we approve D dash zero three dash 11.
Seven.
All in favor?
Aye. This plexiglass barrier for the assessor, is that, that's probably already happened, hasn't it? Debbie? Yeah, plexiglass barrier for the assessor?
Yes.
We've kind of already approved that. I move that we approve D dash zero six dash zero one.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay, this 10 telework stations, I, I mean, you guys are good. I was just kind of wanting a little more clarification there.
We can.
And then I can go visit with the judge.
Yeah, we can. We got questions. Let's don't approve them. Uh, we just.
I mean, but, you know, just, just because I got questions, I mean, if you guys want to approve it, I, I'm not gonna, I won't vote against, but I just, I just had some questions.
I can read you the verbiage from the application if that would be helpful?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, it says, "In responding to the COVID-19 emergency, we are in the process of setting up a portion of our clerk staff to work at home who are at risk for COVID-19 infections or have children who attend to live school, increasing the risk that the family will be exposed or quarantining of those who have been exposed and rotating staff. And that the court records are substantially made and held in electronic form. To work at home requires computer equipment at the home to continue work. Moving an entire desktop is impractical, so our plan is to move the CPU back and forth and installing separate peripherals. At any one time, we would like to have about 40% of our clerk staff out of the building. Same would apply to our pretrial release staff, who assess and advise the judges about pretrial release risk of defendants home in jail. We are estimating a cost of $1,500 per installation for either laptops or peripherals such as printers, scanners, and monitors. This one's office request eight sites, with pretrial release request two sites for a total of 15,000."
I don't even know what to think. I mean, we, obviously, we've rotated staff here in our offices and county offices trying to keep, you know, some of our staff out of, out of the building. I realize that maybe they're dealing with the public a little more. I mean, everybody's got a risk of having kids in public schools. I mean, I'd... I don't know. I, I'm just talking. I, I don't disagree that maybe this is a, a good thing. Maybe we could, we could split the difference and, and do half of that and just see how it goes. And obviously, we could always do more or-
Or if we move it back to, to later, I mean, we, this is Phase Two, but I mean, we, if, you know, heaven, heaven forbid if we have, you know, in, in October, the numbers go sky high. I don't know if this is something we can get very quickly and implement it or, um...
I mean, surely, we've already made some accommodations from people working at home. And, I mean, obviously, the courts are trying to ramp back up and, you know, they've kind of been shut down for a while and so-
Yeah, so-
I don't know. Like I said, I'm just talking. I just, I'm not trying to make a decision. I'm just trying to get some dialogue going between the three of us and, as we try to make some decisions.
Well, I know, the next part on the HEPA filters kinda goes back, you know, where they're saying that it, that they need that down in the, uh, the basement where pretrial release is. Because it's, I-
Well, but I mean, Ralph's, Ralph's down in the basement too. And, and they're in the office working and, um... I don't know.
Who are you gonna, who are you gonna talk to Judge Beadham?
Yeah, yeah.
We could, we could hold off on that and have you get-
Yeah, well, I just, I mean, I just wanted to hear your thoughts too on it, so.
I'll keep things moving, keep them open over there. And if this helps with that. I thought their requests were pretty reasonable. I mean, I think they could have asked for a lot more too.
I figured they would.
Yeah, I kind of expect there'd be a little more over there too, but... I think they probably did due diligence and went through and said, "Well, this is what we need and this is what we really want to ask for," instead of asking for a million dollars and ask for what they just needed. So, um, but if you wanna, if you wanna talk to them about those, that's fine.
I wonder, you know, they, when they closed for two weeks, um... I wonder, yeah, um, did, did they work from home then? I mean, I'm...
Mary, your, your question's more like, why do they need that many or?
Well, no, this is, two, two are gonna be, uh, for pretrial release. So it's just eight that the courts are asking for.
Okay, so your question, if they can do it with less or for less, you think?
No, I, I, I don't think that fifteen hundred dollars of hell anything, it's-
Even if they don't use it all, they just get reimbursed for what they do use.
So I guess the way I look at it is, I mean, things that we're gonna continue to use moving into the future, well, you know, if this stuff goes away, now we got, now we got ten workstations that-
We can eliminate some offices.
Well, there you go too. Yeah, so who's gonna, who's gonna watch and make sure they're working?
And see if the work's getting done.
So I just think, uh... My thing on the, the, the workstations is, I think we've been managing. And so, you know, are we, but, I mean, I get it. Just trying to look at what the other requests, you know, from, that are gonna be coming based on requests that we're approving today. And, and that's kind of my same way with the HEPA filters. So, I mean, you know, everybody starts getting, we start approving HEPA filters for the courts. Now everybody's gonna want HEPA filters over here and stuff too, and so, um...
See, I'm ignorant about what, what a HEPA filter actually does, so...
All right, so that one's on hold for now?
Yeah, let's let you talk to Judge Beadham and then maybe report back to us Tuesday.
Sounds like all of the D oh seven oh twos are on hold for them.
All of them?
No.
Hang on, just a second.
Just that first one, I thought, what you were talking about.
Yeah, we have-
Okay. Sorry, just, just the first one is on hold.
The tunneling stations?
Yeah.
Got it. And then, the HEPA filters, three large HEPA filters for courtrooms?
On it with the application references, uh, the lack of ventilation in the basement and in the courtroom, they're unable to open the windows during the trial, during trials because of the ambient street noise. So, sounds like your request is based on the airflow. And Debbie and Kristen, I was gonna ask you, if you have this application, then you would forward to commissioners, not my internal, if you have questions? Because they did put quite a bit of detail in here.
What is this?
This is the HEPA, their application.
Uh, this is the judge brought up this?
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw it here, thank you.
I thought I did somewhere.
I just don't know what HEPA filters is up there.
Well, they got, everybody's over there wearing masks and everything too, so, I don't know.
I know, we got an old building and we got a really old HVAC system in that, as we do here. So, 'cause that's one of our capital improvements. Sometime when we're flush with money is we're gonna replace the HVACs. When Jeff wins the lottery or something.
I'm not coming to large in place, so I'm sorry.
I don't either, so... But, uh-
Actually, I lied, I did give him five dollars to the group this weekend. Could have won.
But I, yeah, I mean, it, I don't have any problem with them, but I, I don't really know.
I just think we, we go down the road of putting them in different offices, we're gonna be buying all kinds of them, so, I mean, um... Just my thoughts.
Would y'all prefer to, to put that on hold or, um... Me too.
Where you at with that?
I, I, you know, I'm-
I'm not giving my answer yet.
I would, those, those I would probably approve, just, you know. Again, if we can get our, keep our courts functioning and, and, uh...
I was fine with them too. I mean, it's locked up, they don't have windows they can open. They've got a lot of other, I mean, we do have a lot of people come through here too, but I think we've got a little better units in this building and some of the other buildings.
We don't put out, we don't put out as much hot air. We don't put out as much hot air.
Debbie wouldn't agree with you.
The hell do we not? We've got air conditioning on and windows open half the time. Then we still the windows up here and I'll get you some filters, it'll save that electricity.
Okay. Wait, address, are, are you okay with it?
Don't get me on a different-
Are you okay with it?
Keep me focused, yes.
Then I'm okay with it too, so those are-
So the-
So the three large and the three small, they both appear?
Yes, yes.
So, are we gonna, when we do these, do we have to do D dash oh seven dash oh two specify which ones? Or are they, do they have another sub number?
No, I think as long as you specify here to there, they won't bring it over to the third column.
Okay, so then do we, we want to vote on that one then?
Let's, uh, let's go ahead and talk about all these and then, I mean, if you guys are good on those, those two.
Yeah.
I was good on the Plexiglas, AV equipment, off-site trials. Um, AV equipment for viewing criminal trials from other courts, other rooms, courts, sixty-five hundred. And then AV equipment in courtroom to assist jurors, twenty-five hundred. And then where are we at on cleaning?
Well, I think, you know, the Judge Beadham, you know, said they would like to have kinda continuous cleaning, have, have, um... You know, have it, have them walk around and wipe everything down. But then he had also said that these people would actually do some of the work that the clerks who are working offsite-
Are you talking about that or the deep cleaning?
Well, both.
The cleanings, additional cleaning staff. Said three, three hundred and fifty hours a month for four months.
I'm fine with giving them some hour to help with that because they're doing a lot of extra stuff. We've seen some of our guys walking around with a rag and sprayer in their hand all day long and there's other maintenance issues they could be taking care of that need to be addressed.
Okay.
So I'm fine with that one.
The temporary, the part-time?
Yeah, the additional cleaning staff.
And then the deep cleaning, which I guess we'd hire that out?
I got mixed feelings about the deep cleaning, but I'm, I'm okay with it. I just-
That one I have a hard time with.
Yeah, I mean, I-
I have a hard time on it.
I mean, you, you deep clean one day and you got germs everywhere the next day. I mean, I don't, I don't know, um...
But does it keep fighting the germs, you know, even after?
I don't think any of them keep fighting the germs.
I've seen commercials that say they keep fighting.
Have you seen it on Facebook too?
It's on the internet.
Yes, it is.
No, that's one of the things-
Gotta be true.
It's one of the things they talk about. It was that it doesn't just kill it right then, it does keep fighting it, so I don't, I don't know.
I think that's a bunch of malarkey. I'm sorry, but-
All right, so I'm go-
Is it an airborne virus or is it transmitted by touch?
I don't know, there's a football game on tonight, so I know I'm pretty happy.
I, you know-
Or it only transfers by beer bottle?
I would like to see what Greg, if, if we get these, these sprayers in, I mean, you know-
After ten o'clock, if you're in it.
Well, we got, you know what, we got, we'll have the big screen TVs over there. Watch, they go watch. Jeff could-
This is our method of madness.
Jeff could come join us too, Jeff.
Okay.
I was gonna say, whatever helps, helps the process, right?
So do we want to wait on the deep cleaning?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would-
I think you had two of y'all that were, that weren't crazy about it and I'm kind of mixed feelings, so.
All right, so we're gonna kind of approve these at mass here.
Can we go watch more TV?
So, I move that we approve D dash zero seven dash zero two for three large HEPA filters in courtrooms, three small HEPA filters in basement offices, Plexiglas barriers in courtroom for attorney clients, AV equipment to support civil litigation, ten to twelve days of off-site venues for civil jury trial, selection and trials, AV equipment for viewing criminal trials from other court, from other rooms, courts, AV equipment in courtroom to assist jurors, additional cleaning staff at three hundred and fifty hours per month for four months, courts.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. So we're holding on the teleworkstations and the deep cleaning?
Yeah.
And then, uh, window intercom for public administrator, I'm good. You guys good?
Yes, I think we already done it too, so.
I move that we approve D dash ten dash zero two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. That was it for today?
That's all, Louie. Is there anything else, um, that we can do differently or anything to, to help you all as we go through this process? Now that we're starting to get some volume going?
No, I think it's been working good.
Yeah.
All right, we appreciate everybody's time, hope you have a great day.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Go Chiefs.
Yeah, 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 I like the sign. Your one from Wichita had with the-
What's wrong with you?
Oh, you're just a Dallas. You know, the chief, the chiefs were the, the Dallas Texans.
I know, there's a little bit of cowboy fan in all of y'all.
Yes, right.
I got a really good book on, on the Chiefs and the time they were Dallas Texans.
Three hundred and fifty hours, are you going to let the courts hire these people? Or do you want that to go under our maintenance? Does that make a big difference?
I think whatever's easiest.
And our maintenance is because, I mean, well, we do have a couple part-timers for the circuit, but-
Uh, depends on who you want them working for. Do they want to work for the judges and then the judges get to tell them what to do? And that way, we don't have to worry about them telling us and saying they're not doing the job. Or do we want them under our maintenance?
But I think Debbie's question, your question's more payroll, um, and who, I mean, it's gonna run through our payroll?
Yeah.
I mean, so, so would it be a subcategory as courts or would it be under?
The only ones we have payroll in now is those couple part-timers for the circuit clerk, so it run under the circuit clerk, if you didn't mind Greg supervising them. If you want Greg supervising them, then it would go under his budget. I would, I would assume that's how, I would, you know, way to go.
I, yeah, I wouldn't put them under Greg, I'd let them-
Well, my understanding is they're gonna be doing more than just cleaning because he was saying they were gonna do some of the duties that the clerks have been doing who are working remotely, so, yeah, I don't-
So you're gonna bring part-time people in and do the work that people are doing, working from remote?
Yeah.
It says cleaning staff.
Well, I know, but, but when Judge Beadham was here, he had kind of inferred they, so I, it-
But I think he was, his point was that they're able to do stuff in the computer and that they still need to have time to file stuff or get papers and make copies that they don't have time to do because they're having to wipe things down after everybody. So maybe I didn't take it exactly that way, but-
I don't really care, just put them under the courts and let, and we won't have a-
I mean, there's gonna have to be some coordination there, but, I mean-
I mean, they're gonna need supplies too, so.
Right.
Or have to work with maintenance somehow, with Greg somehow. See what, I kinda, I, like you said, whatever works the easiest.
Yeah, I mean, I just, you know, I want somebody over here telling them what they need to be doing and watching them. I mean, Greg don't need to be babysitting.
They got cameras.
And who's watching them?
Marshals.
Marshals, yeah.
I don't, I just don't want them up-
Is Marky still injured? We can have him do that.
I just don't want them upstairs just watching TV.
I can have one of the ones sitting at home watching them and telling them, "Hey, clean that, clean that, clean that."
I mean, you, you need to be already involved to certain, so I don't have the security part of-
I mean, if there's, if there's a checklist of, you know, I start on the fourth floor and start working, you know, cleaning all this stuff and then work, go down to the third floor and, you know,
and then the judge-
Third, second, first, whatever basement. But I mean, obviously, you're just gonna be wiping stuff down and cleaning stuff all day long, I would assume.
Yeah.
I, you know, keep going, circle basically, yeah.
Too bad we can't find some people that need to do some community service.
That's what they were using.
Was it?
Yeah, that's what they were using and, uh, it- Yeah, that's what they were using and it...
Well, you just have to let me know or let Greg know and let somebody know what that was my business. And then I'll just notify, I guess.
Okay, either way.
That they've been hurt with this circuit.
I'm sure nobody over, I don't know. I guess Judge Beadham about that as well. Somebody's going to be watching them or in charge, or, I mean, so... I don't know how much our maintenance guys are actually over here in the courthouse, so. But they don't...
I think Danny's are all day, I think that's kind of his spot, so...
So maybe Danny could...
Danny could oversee, and then we ought to keep it in, under Greg because Danny can kind of be the... Shut up. I know you had a, you had, you had, go, go watch, go watch one.
That's why I'm not any good at poker. You read me. I'm fine with which way we do it. I know Greg's got plenty of other stuff to do and take care of and... But if he, if it's going to be easier for him to be over top of them and...
Yeah, probably.
And they're not stepping on each other's toes on final...
I mean, the judges and stuff got so much stuff going on, they're gonna...
Well, it's the same with Greg though. I mean, he's got all this other maintenance stuff and then, you know, to watch somebody over there on top of it, is that something he needs to throw in his lap too? Yeah, I think we can just ask the judge how he wants to do it. If they want to be in charge of them and then they can tell them what to do.
Yeah, I'm, I'm...
But if they're, they don't want to.
Well, if you're going to talk to Judge Beadham anyway, just ask him.
Which side do you want to argue? I can argue both of them.
Oh, come on, Jeff, pick a side. The fence.
I'm going to put you in charge. You got, you got, you got parking and you got...
It's barbed wire and it's in your crotch. Jump off.
You got barbed wire, you, you got parking.
That's, that's, I feel a little barbed wire, Chris, so let the judges have them. Then if there's a problem, it's theirs.
Okay.
See, and I was saying, give it to Greg, but...
I flipped a quarter.
All right, we're digressing.
Any, any other business?
I may be standing recess till 4:30.
All in favor?
Aye.
Jeff, Ron Jeff?